Commission is called to order, and we'll start with real call.
Chair Spears.
Present.
Vice Chair Hutt.
Here.
Commissioners Cottolano.
Here.
Dennison.
Here.
DeSai.
Here.
Fireman Hunt.
Here.
Hevzner. And that's it.
Okay. Next up, we need an approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, great. Now we want to, approval of the minutes of the commission meeting on November 2nd. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting of November 2nd?
Good to me. I'll move approval of the minutes from November 2nd.
It's been moved. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
We're all abstained because I was.
Okay, so we have one abstention. Alright. So at this point, we have the opportunity for audience comments. And we want to say that any person may address the planning commission concerning any item that is not listed on our agenda. And that we always welcome the participants for their input. When addressing the planning commission, we want them to state their name and address. And seeing no one in the audience, we will open and close the audience comment section and go to our first discussion topics. And we're ready for staff.
So we are going to continue our discussion regarding the nonconforming uses ordinance. And also, we did add to the staff report historic preservation ordinance as well. And on the November 2nd meeting, the planning commission reviewed the recommended changes to the nonconforming uses ordinance, which were drafted by the subcommittee, and everybody agreed that a number of revisions would be brought back for further consideration by the commission. And that's what we're doing this evening. A couple of the items that we're bringing back, two options for addressing nonconforming parking. And the red line and clean versions of the ordinance are attached, both as exhibits A and B. And also, the parking revision options are attached as exhibit C and D. The commission will also consider changes to address adaptive reuse to the historic structures in chapter seventeen point eight two historic preservation ordinance, including an amendment to allow bed and breakfast use in multifamily historic properties up to twelve units, and to include the requirement for an innkeeper for this type of use. We're also going to be looking at possible revisions to the adaptive reuse of historic landmarks. And again, the red line and clean versions of these sections are attached as exhibit E.
Okay. I want to once again commend Commissioner Hutt on his leadership role in the subcommittee.
I second that.
It would, it would not be done so well without you, so thank you very much. And if you want, do you want to lead the discussion on where we want to?
Well, I think on, sure, I think on the nonconforming, you know, we can just go through and make sure the changes conform to what we discussed. I think there's a couple, there's a couple things, most of it, I think, is pretty, just works like we talked about, but there's a couple areas we probably want to circle in on.
Okay.
So it probably easiest just to go straight through and see if anybody has any comments on anything. The first, the first revision was on seventeen fifty six oh six oh A on the second page. And this was extra verbiage that we thought was not helpful. Also, we talked about putting in language that says except is otherwise allowed, but then that's actually up above. And I realized that was there, so we didn't need to do that. And then in B, there was this weird thing from the Pasadena code about moving.
Yeah.
And so we, we got that and just made it clear, we're talking about demolishing structures.
I wonder if it wasn't originally re-moving, but yeah, moving. Okay.
And then, is everyone good on that?
Okay. And then, next page on seventeen fifty six oh seven oh.
We made a defined term for involuntary damage, which means both, includes both the casualty event and the eating away by termites or dry rot or whatnot. And then, we also had a discussion about the date, and so we added a defined term for the date. And that's going to mean when the casualty is, or when the city deems the damaged structure to be unsafe or irreparably deteriorated. So that would include a red tag by the building department, or it would be if Vincent, if, if, if they're coming through plan check in Vincent, or I guess it would be the director on that point, would, would do the irreparably deteriorated was the term we talked about last time. So that, those are the two defined terms which I added in B. And then, the rest of the language is cleanup to just use those defined terms and take out the other.
Everybody okay so far?
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
And on the next page, there's continuing conforming changes in that section. But moving on to the next section, seventeen fifty six oh eight oh. We added a section, a new section B for reduction of a nonconformity. Because you remember, we had the concept that if you, you can eliminate the nonconformity, or you can do work that's conforming in a, in a different area.
Yeah.
There was this issue of, well, what if you make it better, but not all the way?
Yeah.
Compliant. And so, this is sort of blending the two things that we talked about. Number one is malicious language about residential setbacks. And number two is the concept, if it's not covered by that specific instance, you can do whatever you want, but you need an administrative design review permit.
But the whole point is that it's an improvement over its previous state.
Right.
Where it not maybe, it may not be compliant, it is less noncompliant.
And, and the concept in, in one is that there's some point that a nonconforming setback would be better than even, even making it more conforming. Like, if you think, and this is a lot of times we think about the, the lot line garages. So if you have garages butted up, you know, if it were moved back one foot, that's reducing the
Conformity.
Nonconformity.
But doesn't improve the.
That's not, that's really worse than having it butted up. And so, you know, the question there is, are these numbers the right numbers?
Yeah.
Fifteen feet in the front, five in the rear, and three in the side.
Yeah. So to tack on to that, my one question I had was in numbers, but two. Is there ever an instance, or do you come across where there's a nonconformance of the front yard setback? Because that's one that I thought may not be one you want in here. I don't know. It seemed like the sides and the rear were issues of nonconformance, like garages or accessory structures. But the front yard, like.
On occasion, we do.
You do?
I, in my years, I have seen some.
Okay.
And, and probably more likely now that we have the prevailing setback calculation.
Yeah.
Oh, so you mean you could, I understand. You could be violating the prevailing even if you're twenty-five.
Now, yeah.
Right.
So that, that, that number, I, I didn't necessarily pull it out of thin air, but I kind of made it based on, like, when we redid the R3, we were allowing as close to the street as fifteen, you know, we had some other things. But, so that number kind of felt right, but I, but I don't know how it works with, you know, the prevailing and all that, because those numbers could be way out of whack. So I don't know. That, that number was the one that was, seemed a little squishy. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I'm fine on the fifteen. I, I don't even know if we even really need that. I mean, because there's, the, the other issue is, from, from a fire access perspective, you know, if it's abutting the street, there's, there's, even if there's zero setback, there's not a, an access issue. So in some ways, if it were, you know, eight feet and they moved it to ten, that would probably be better.
Yeah.
So I don't know if.
Yeah, so that was.
Side yards so firefighters can get to the back.
Right. I mean, to me, the question is, and I think the five in the rear is the right answer, too.
Yeah. The sides and the rear, I'm, I feel good about.
The side is to me is, well, to me is, I, I don't know about three. I'm, that's as wide as my front door. I, I sort of like for the fire guys. Do you, is five, I've always heard five is sort of the magical number for getting through there with a ladder.
Well, but see, the thing with, the five is, in most instances, other than maybe canyon, I don't know about some properties there, but five is our, the conforming setback, in most cases.
For a, for a narrow lawn.
In R1. Well, your typical fifty, you know, fifty-five.
If it's a wide lot, it's more, right.
But I, I think the question is, I think we all agree that, you know, if it were one feet, you'd rather just have them butted up, right?
I think there's more problem.
And, and if it's five or more, that's all good. And so, what's the number there that, that you'd rather, you, you get to the point where you'd rather have that than, than butted up? And is three the right number?
Well, three also has a tie into the building code. So like, they, they, they do designate, if you have structures at three feet from a property line, you, you, I don't think you, you can have very little windows, if any, where they have to be fire protected. They can only be twenty-five percent of that surface. So there's, there's some tie into the code, which, which makes sense. And they only really dictate like at three feet and five feet.
Right.
So whatever happens at five and beyond, you can do.
It shouldn't be less than three.
So three is kind of like this benchmark, like the closest.
Right.
Could I add something to this? You know, the, we, we get into a judgment area here. And in some cases, yes, what do you, what do you need for the firemen to get to the back, to the backyard? And, and sometimes you'll have that much setback on one side and fifteen feet setback on the other side yard. There, there was, and there are the issues, there are the issues of, well, we'll allow this, but then, when you get, when you get to building and safety, well, nobody told me I couldn't have the windows. And then there's also the issue that you brought up last time of rebuilding exactly as it was, except that the ceiling is seven foot three, not allowable by code. Look, they're, they're going, I don't know exactly how to address this, but there are these gray areas. And a lot of our stuff seems to be predicated on like this one staff model that, which works for new construction, let's say, where, you know, that you get your, you go to planning and you get your entitlements, they throw it over the wall to building and safety. And, and then, when the working drawings come in and, and they're in substantial compliance and everything else is okay, you approve it for a building permit. There, there are some times, I've seen this in, in other jurisdictions, where you have to have a, a planning and the building official talk together with the, with the applicant right up front.
What a concept.
Huh?
Yeah.
What's that? I'm sorry.
So that's, what a concept.
Well, you know, and, and I've, I've participated in that, and I've seen it, I've seen it work. But in, in some of these kinds of things, I really think that, there, I don't know how we address it here, but I'd like to encourage the idea that, that you look at a staff model, we look at a staff model, where they, you know, where you can make a unified, hopefully ministerial decision on the part, and, you know, for the applicant. And then, of course, we've, we've seen a really bad one recently, where the, the applicant engaged in, in what they used to call shuttle diplomacy between the, the, the planning and the building department. And they, you know, they found the opening. You know about that.
Well, I, I can tell you from experience that the, you know, the fire department wants to get ladders and hoses to the backyard, and the widest thing that's going through there is the firemen. And so, in New York City, where the brownstones are physically touching each other, they go through the front door and out the back door where there are ladders and hoses. So you just need to get enough room so a guy can put a ladder on his shoulder or pull a hose and walk through. And as long as they have access, then, you know, the safety will be served. And in Sierra Madre, you know, we don't have a lot of guys, and we don't have a huge fire department. And so, we're going to need to make sure that, you know, we give them every shot we can to be successful. So that's just my concern.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think that, that three feet probably is
Three feet will do.
That makes sense to me, because it's, it's enough to be able to get through. In order to, you know, just to clean up and stuff.
And I think this is, we have to keep in mind, this is a narrowly focused sense, which is like, and it's for an instance where it's nonconforming.
Already.
And you're, you're going to try to make it less nonconforming, so.
I mean, I think it's not going to come up.
It's like transitioning toward them towards almost conformance.
And you're still making it better.
Will come up rarely, if ever, and I think.
Can you get somebody out on a stretcher through three feet wide?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we put them on a backboard and they, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I. As long as, as long as the people are not more than three feet wide, yeah. Yeah, right.
Well, I'd still like to, I'd still like to suggest that, you know, going to your example of the, the low ceiling height and the two by four rafters, that maybe there, is, is there some way to, for staff to have some, some ability to, to make those calls without, without, based on building code for ceiling height and rafter height?
Well.
Without having, sending the, the applicant here for a variance?
Well, I think one of the things is that, you know, there's, there's the issue of compliance with laws. And so, we, we do talk about building code compliance, that, and that's listed in, in, in C and D below. So I think that's, that's covered.
You don't, you don't see where there'd be a discrepancy that anybody would use there?
I mean, the only, the only place I saw, and this is like interpreting, like to the letter of the word, was in, in, I guess it's in seventeen fifty six zero seventy D, where we outline, you know, residential uses or structures. And it says here, nonconforming single and multifamily dwelling units, including residential and mixed use that have been involuntary damaged. So we change that, that, that makes sense. May be repaired, reconstructed, or replaced with a new structure using the same development standards applied to the destroyed, damaged structure, structures, e.g. setback, square footage, height density.
In compliance with state law.
Yeah. So, to me, the only thing with that is, if you can't, and I'm thinking for really old structures that are noncompliant. What, what does that mean, the, the most recent code that it's under, or what it was under when it was built? Like, I mean, in some cases, I don't know how far back you can go to see what the standards were. Because you're saying basically you match the same standards.
Right.
If the height back in nineteen twelve said, you know, twenty foot max.
Wasn't the standard.
Well, I don't know. It, it was the standard then, whatever it was. Now it's different. But is that, I mean, how does that get interpreted?
The interpretation would be meaning to today's, the twenty sixteen California building code standard, yeah.
Current standard.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
So then that covers us.
Yeah, I think if you, when you look at seventeen fifty six oh seven oh and oh eight oh together, that you, you're going to have, that's going to work. Because if you have the issue where you're rebuilding the prior, but you need to, you know, augment the height a little bit to, to comply with, with building code, you know, seventeen fifty six oh eight oh D is going to, is going to apply. And so, I think that works.
Okay, yeah, I like that. Because I think previously somewhere it said match or duplicate height, da, 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 da. Which that, to me, gets to like, well, it's got to be exactly the same. But I think this gives the latitude, like the current code says, the height limits X. And it, you know, if you need seven feet inside and foot of structure, like you, there's some latitude there to.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not totally clear that a, that in, in applicant who, who doesn't have the, doesn't have the skills that we have around the table, would be able to understand that the, the right way.
That's why they hire architects. And we have great faith in the architectural people to help them do that. More business.
But I mean, this is pretty clear. I mean, it says repaired, reconstructed, or replaced with a new structure using the same development standards applied to the damaged or destroyed structure. And in specific relationship to setbacks, square footage, building height, and density standards. So whatever that, that house is currently under, as far as building code and regulations, that, we're going to, we're going to use the same standards for your new project that's replacing that. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think it works. I don't, and I, again, I mean, there's some point where you, you want to hold people's hands, homeowners who are doing the little addition, but at some point, you know, if people are trying to undertake a, a really complicated project, they need to hire experts to help them.
They do. They do. And they don't, and they don't always.
No, they don't.
And that's, that's not something we're going to fix in this.
You know, it's.
Sometimes they just build it.
Yeah, and sometimes they don't.
I, I'm looking at a situation where, where what Mr. DeSai just read, you know, could be perfectly good for say, the, the footprint, the floor area of a building, but it's just too, it, it, it's just too low. So it's, it's kind of like, there's two different interpretations needed, one, one for the footprint and the other for, other for the height. And, you know, all in the same application.
Yeah, but in here, it says, they're, they have the latitude to enforce the current code. So in the current code, you can have, you know, higher ceilings and.
And, and.
Yeah, right.
And one of our assumptions is always that the applicant is going to check with, with the city at some point in time to get assistance and guidance. And, and in this city, they're very good about helping people at the counter. So it's not as if we have to spell out everything, you know.
No, I would just encourage you to, you know, to know when you should, you should get the building, the building official and the planner together.
They do, yeah.
I'm sorry?
We do.
Okay, good. Good.
All right. Where else?
Real, real quick, on oh eight oh, so Vincent, you're saying the front yard does come up as far as a nonconforming?
Not often, but on, on occasions.
Okay. I, that's the only number I'm not.
The fifteen?
The fifteen, if that.
Less?
I don't know if that captures kind of, like, because to me, in my mind, we always had like twenty-five was kind of like the standard setback. But I know now we have prevailing, which.
But keep in mind, this is all residential, so we, we've got fifteen in R3.
Yeah, which that's where I pulled.
And I don't know, and, and canyon, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head what it is in canyon, but I know there's a lot of, it's not twenty-five.
Canyon was the, was the one place where there'd be except.
Maybe less than fifteen even.
So I mean, if you want to move the fifteen to ten?
That's what I mean, like, if they're in, are we hurting certain zones like canyon where even fifteen is like?
I don't have heartburn moving fifteen to ten.
Yeah.
That's.
What's the feeling of the commission? You okay with that?
But in, in any case, whatever we say is, it would be a larger setback than what they currently have.
Correct.
Right.
It would A, be an improvement, and this is not something that's going to come up a lot.
Well, you have to consider the worst case scenario, which would be something on the property line in the front.
Right.
So how are you improving that? That's, that's the scenario. The house is already at ten or an eight or something.
Yeah.
That's.
And if it goes from five to ten, we're still happier.
Okay, so I, I could, I could see that.
Okay.
I'll change it to ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, C, which was the old B, I just hard dated that instead of referencing adoptions of other things, because that's always a pain in the butt to administer. And then, because we have in the B, an ability to reduce the nonconformity in a couple places following on in this chapter, we say, or is otherwise allowed, because you can do stuff that's not conforming. So that's that.
In this, the next page, in this document, it goes to B, but I saw in the non-redlined, it went to F. There's like, after E.
Yeah, the.
Should be F, right?
The, we, we should check the.
Oh.
In the redline.
Good pull, because it goes back to B, it should be F.
No, but in the non-redlined, it's F.
Yeah, I think it's right in the non-redline. When, when I did the redline, it, I don't know, the, the numbering got weird, so.
Okay.
That, that's one of the things that we need to just look at the non-redline version.
Yeah, it's F.
Good catch.
Okay, next page, seventeen fifty six oh nine oh. We, we ditched the term adaptive, because adaptive reuse has a specific meaning, and we're just talking about reuse. On the parking, let's go through the rest of it first, and then we'll, we'll double back to the, the options.
Okay.
On the next page, seventeen fifty six one hundred, we've got some fixing title, things that were capitalized. And then, fifty six one ten. And then fifty-six one ten, we've got the defined term use again, and then fifty-six one twenty was, um. I attempted rewriting this language about the institutional uses.
Yeah.
And so, you know, this is a first cut, so.
And this is leftover, this is the one part that's left over from our previous.
This was the concept that was left over from previous, but, and on advice of council, um, we figured it's, it's better not to call out places of worship.
Yeah.
And the real issue here is that we wanna limit institutional uses in the commercial zone, and it's not whether they're churches or otherwise, really. So.
Yeah.
So we tried to make that language more generic.
Is council okay with that? Okay, then.
I thought it made sense to me, I wasn't here at the other meeting, but coming to it from a new perspective, it looked.
And then we also, I also tried to clean up the language a little bit about what, when they expand on what properties they could expand to, and it's the properties that they're already located.
Right.
Yeah, not to new properties.
Right.
We had discussed that two meetings ago.
Okay.
Okay, so then that's, that's that, then, then the other big issue we came on was this, this, um, issue of. The parking exceptions. And, um. And I think a lot of this is driven by the, the, the issue of, that our, um, non-residential is done by square, by square foot. But parking has the, for res has these big steps.
We're on exhibit C?
Uh, yeah, and so exhibit C is what it would look like if we had the parking, uh, exceptions only applied to non-res. And so, you have your automatic credit under, um, B one B. And then under B, well, it's actually A, it's sorta hard to read in, in the, um. In, in the redline, um. But that allows you to do other things with a minor conditional use permit. So you've got a certain amount where you get credit, and then if you don't conform to the automatic credit, um, you could, you can still do a reuse by doing a minor conditional use from it. And so, a, as the way it was originally drafted, those two concepts both apply to res and non-res. And so, exhibit B shows what it would look like if those, both only applies to non-res, and there was no exception at all for residential. And then, option C is. We apply the, the automatic credit only to residence, only to non-res launch, excuse me. Um, but the concept of having discretionary review, um, would apply to the non-res or the res. And that way, you'd still have some flexibility for, um, residential properties, but there would be a discretionary review to make sure it, it wasn't an abusive kind of thing. And, you know, it's interesting, because when we had this conversation, you know, the natural inclination is first to defend your own language, right? But then, after I, I, I revised it and thought about it, the more and more I thought, well, I like C a lot better, because there's, there is a potential for abuse and, um. And also, because of the way we, we require two spaces for, you know, a tiny house all the way to a big house, you could, you could have some. You could foresee there's some, some potential issues there, but there's also the potential issues for inequity, where there's, you know, three big houses, a substandard parking. And some guy with a little itty-bitty house, and he just wants to add one bedroom, but we're not gonna, but we say, no, no, you need two covered spaces. And so this addresses that kind of thing, where, you know, somebody's going from a studio or one bedroom and just adding a little bit, and we're like, yeah, one parking space is good enough for you. In this situation, we can look at, you know, look at the neighborhood and whatnot, um, but it's not gonna have the situation where the person who has one parking space and is credited with two. Can then go up to a four thousand square foot, four-bedroom thing, and which would cause all sorts of problems.
I think this is, I like this solution, and I was the one who originally brought up this issue of.
Right.
You do with residential and the whole thing with parking spots, and I think this is a, this is a good solution to that problem.
Good compromise.
It's a good compromise, so, you know.
Administrative, right.
Yeah, it's a minor conditional use.
A minor conditional use.
It's still being regulated, but it's not being over-regulated.
So, but in addition to the regular minor CUP findings, there's the additional finding that such parking deficit will not unreasonably overload street parking or public parking facilities, nor create a nuisance. So there's, there's sort of the general C, CUP finding, um, but then there's this one specifically tailored to parking.
Which would take that specific street into account.
Yeah.
And they would bring you a parking plan of some kind, if that, that's what you, you would ask them to do if they came to you?
If we needed that, yes. Yeah, I think one of the things is, you know, there's, there's a provision now in our, um, parking section that talks about a par, having a parking study done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but a parking study, and it says by re, certified engineer, blah, 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 and that costs like five thousand dollars now. And so if you got a big project, you know, and you're doing shared parking, and you do all the timing of when the restaurant, the officer, you know, that makes sense. But I remember we had one guy who was doing the.
The optometrist had to do.
Well, the optometrist, but before that, there was a dentist on, um. Sierra Madre Boulevard, a little east, and it was like, I live there, so.
Yeah.
Why do I need a guest parking space and a residential parking space, you know, and it was just like, one guy, one use, and it's like, it doesn't make sense to have him do a fi. And you, all you need to do is go, oh yeah, that makes sense. So you don't really need a five thousand dollar certified engineer study to figure that one out, so, and this one, I think you get enough flexibility that.
I agree.
But it also gives, gives staff the opportunity to.
Way in.
Look at it.
Look at it and make sure that there's no abuse of altering something to add more rooms or addition and going way beyond what is reasonable for.
Right.
And in the case that staff is unclear or uncertain, staff can always suggest that it get pushed up to the commission, is that right?
We can. Yeah, I think we added that in the, I don't remember if we did it for all minor things, or it was just, um, design review permits. But they are all appealable, um, and I remember we added one provision that said that the director has the discretion to just bump it up. But I don't remember if that's only for administrative design review permits, or if that's for all staff-level discretion, then we'd have to go back and check on that.
Yeah, because we, conditional use permits are now separate from.
Right.
So.
And, um, and also, the other thing to keep in mind is, th- this is an approval for one thing, just with regard to the parking. But if there's other approvals that are required, you know, they would be all put together, and in residential, especially if it's an R one, um, and they're doing, you know, second floor. It automatically is gonna come to us, and it would get, it would get.
And they would be folded in.
Yeah, and it would be folded in, and, and we, we, I, I remember we added the provision in the discretionary, uh, review section, where we said that, you know, if you have, if you require all these different things. And some are staff level and some are a planning commission level, you put it all together and you ship it up to the planning commission.
Okay.
I think that captures my.
So the commission favors, uh, the second version?
I think so.
Uh, the option C.
Option C.
Vincent, I've got one of these at home on the computer that's all put together, so I can email you that. And we've got one change to make at ten.
Okay. You still have the, the B, E?
Oh, that's the, um.
Historic preservation?
Preservation, right. So, the, the issue here was that, um. I don't remember how long ago it was, a couple years ago, we.
Penny House?
The, for the Penny House, I remember this before I got on the, like, on the commission, there was a, a zoning code change that was, uh, passed through specifically for the Penny House. To allow bed and breakfast in historic structures.
Which never happened, actually.
Which didn't happen, right, but it, but it said only for single family, because I guess the idea was wanted to narrow, narrowly tailor. And then when we revised the R three, we said that you could do that in historic structures, so we had it, we introduced an inconsistency with the idea that we were gonna come back and clean that up. And so then, so this, um, makes clear that you can do bed and breakfasts in single family or multifamily. And in the single family, it only allowed six, um, sort of, uh, hotel rooms. And for multifamily, we just added twelve, and that was a number we sort of. Sort of pulled out of the hat, i- it's not, it's not a magical number, but it seemed to make sense, I think, was, was the subcommittee's thinking. So, that's something that, that we might wanna talk about if we think that that is the right number. Um, and then we also had talked about, uh, in other times, the, uh, the idea of adaptive reuse of historic structures that are in residential areas. For sort of light commercial uses, and so we incorporated the language that is the same language that we use in the RP overlay zone. Which is small entrepreneurial businesses, service or professional offices, and that would allow, um, those adaptive reuse options as well. Um, but all of that would be subject to a full conditional use permit to make sure it fits into the neighborhood and works. And so, this would, you know, further the general plan goals of adaptive reuse and preservation of historic structures. And also, it, it, there's one part in the canyon where there's a, a, a large discussion in the canyon general plan, uh, um, section. About keeping, um, non-residential uses that have predominated the canyon historically, um, but the zoning code doesn't do anything about that. So this helps a little bit, because the building right next to Mary's Market is historic, Mary's Market certainly could be historic if they wanted to, and there's probably some other ones, like Old Fire Station Number Two, if they wanted to reuse, that, you know, could do that. And so, this is sort of a stopgap measure a little bit in that way, until we can look at the canyon zoning.
I have a question about the, the numbers in first section. So is that six units in addition to the resident inn keeper, or is that six units including the resident inn keeper?
That's six in addition.
Okay, and is that?
Cause it says six for transients.
Yeah, for transients.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that seems clear.
I don't know where the six came from, because that was in, when the code was adopted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's sort of.
We have a few, we have a few historical buildings in town that could support six units, that, who are sing, that are single family.
Right, but it's not units, maybe unit isn't the right word.
Six, well, six bedrooms or whatever.
It's really hotel rooms.
Right.
It's not, it's not dwelling units, right, and so that's.
Maybe we should just call it six rooms, or six.
Well, then it might get confused with other kinds of rooms, bedrooms, I don't know. What's, what's the right language, what do we call them?
See, I mean, a unit, but in a bed and breakfast, it's possible that a unit might be two rooms, you know, it could be a suite.
You could have a two-bedroom suite.
Yeah, it could be a suite.
I guess the question is, do you wanna count a two-bedroom suite as two of your six, or one of your six?
Where does the impact lie, is the, is the question, uh, you know, does it have to, i- if it has, if the impact is, is with the rooms. Then it's irrelevant whether a couple of those rooms have been consolidated into a, 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 a unit, a suite, or, or not. Okay, so I think, you know, we just have to look and see where, where's the impact, is, is it, I just, uh, you know, the, uh. Three rooms and two suites, or is it just the number of, number of rooms regardless of?
And we're talking about an upper level here.
Yeah.
So it's six or less, so we don't want more than.
Right.
Six, or more than twelve, so, there are not a lot of buildings that would support that many.
So you should say rooms, and, and, and just leave it at that?
The, the existing, I don't, you know.
The other thing is, it is subject to a CUP, so if somebody somehow managed to weasel in, you know, six, six two-bedroom suites or something, you know, we're gonna review it. And we're gonna go, yeah, I don't think that's gonna work on X quiet residential street.
Right, so we're not saying the structure's not getting any bigger, it's, it's what's within.
How they're gonna partition it.
Define what's within it already.
What's, what's the biggest impact, it's gonna be parking.
Parking, yeah.
It's gonna be parking, it could be noise.
Right.
You know, um, those are probably the two, the two biggest, parking is probably the biggest impact.
I think parking will be the tail that wakes the dog.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, it's hard, because if you have a two-room, you don't, you, it, it just depends, doesn't it, I think it.
Yeah, I, I, I sort of feel like, uh, the other thing is, you know, these things are s, gonna be so few and far between and so unique, we probably don't wanna make as many rules and just.
Just.
Review at each one, because, who knows?
It's coming to us anyways, U P.
Yeah, and it, this is not gonna be a big issue, I mean, one of the big things about this is that the Penny House reverted to multifamily, but there's talk of doing. Half of it as a bed and breakfast and half as multifamily, and, and they can't do that under current code, because now it's only single family, so. This would allow them to at least bring, uh, the application to us, I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense, but, you know.
Well, it does, because we could sit here all night making up what ifs.
Right, right.
You know, who wants to, who wants to bother?
Right, and, and we'll see it as a CUP anyway, so that, that'll give us our, our second bite at the apple.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I think unit is a, is there a definition of unit in the code?
There, there should be, I, I, there is, I'm pretty sure there is.
Slide the picture over.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, the thing is, it, it uses the word unit and not dwelling unit.
Right.
Which is, dwelling unit is what we use for arena and all that stuff.
Yeah, we know about dwelling units.
This is like a, a, a hotel, I mean, it's a room.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm just trying to figure it if, if, yeah.
We could change it to suites, but, I mean, but then, you, then you start getting, I, I.
Yeah, let's just leave it.
I think, yeah, we're.
I, sorry to go back here, but I found one other thing on the main non-conformance.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just highlighted a sentence, it didn't, it wasn't a sentence, and I don't know what it's saying, is seventeen fifty-six zero nine zero, exemptions and exceptions, the first sentence on A. A, non-conformance with loading, parking, screening standards, and residential density, but.
That's the title of it.
That's the title.
That's the title.
So A is the title, and then, okay.
Yeah.
Didn't read that way, I don't know.
No, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's just like the heading.
Okay.
Okay.
It writ, is it, remember.
Good catch, and the good catch.
The next one says parking requirements for research, reuse of existing structures, it's like.
And, yeah.
It would make more sense if it had a one, two, three underneath it, because you'd know it was the heading.
It would make more sense too if it was formatted the way that we normally format code, but this was.
This was a carryover?
Cup, it just came in from Pasadena, and the thing is, when, when we give this to the publishing service, they're gonna format it the way they format it.
Okay, cool.
I, I, I looked at some of those and thought the same thing when I was reading it, so.
So, any, we have any other discussion about historic preservation?
Well, what about the twelve number?
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good thing we shouldn't gloss over.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, conceptually, it's the same as the six number, I don't know how many of these, like, I would hate to ratchet something down arbitrarily. Cause I think that they're gonna be very unique instances, and we're gonna look at it, I, I, I don't, I don't feel good about just going like eight or ten or some number. And that property could potentially accommodate twelve, I don't know, you know, like, or, I mean, I think it's, the proof's gonna be in the pudding when we see it, so, to me. It doesn't bother me that that number's there.
Right, okay, yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, to me, it, you know, you, you, you do what ifs, but to me, the, I think of, well, what's the one multifamily historic property, it's the Gill property. Right, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I could see that being converted to a hotel, a bed and breakfast, and, you know, I don't remember how many units there are in that, but twelve seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I couldn't think of any place that would accommodate more than twelve.
Right, and also, it's only in residential areas, so it's like, they tried to convert Hotel Shirley back to a hotel, it's commercial, so you can do a hotel, so you don't, you don't need that.
Yeah, the Gill, the Gill building, I think if you, if you, you counted, uh, all of those cottages that were built into the courtyard during the fifties, that you would exceed the, exceed the twelve. I don't remember the exact numbers, it's a long time since I looked at it, but I'm, I'm pretty sure if you, if you take the, uh, uh, the units on the east, the, the east side, that were the staff units. And the nineteen fifties cottages plus Gill's work, you're, you're like definitely over twelve on that one. But that's, that's a dream I have, you know, for the end of my career is to demolish all the junk they built in.
Well, then twelve is the right number.
Okay.
Plus, I also think if you get, if you get more than twelve, that's gonna. Plus, I also think if you get, if you get more than twelve, that's gonna, the impacts would be larger.
Yep.
In a residential area, you wouldn't really want any more than twelve, and I'm not sure I would want as many as twelve, but that would be reviewed anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
Plus, there's the issue of what we're talking about next, which is how many units do you really wanna remove from the housing stock and put in? Use as a, eh eh eh, you know, as a hotel.
But, but you wouldn't remove it, well, I guess if it's multifamily, but if it's, if it's single family, you're still gonna have the caretaker unit.
Well.
So it's the one dwelling.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's multifamily, now there's room for one person when there were room for ten families before.
I, oh, and I guess that's one other change that we didn't highlight though.
Okay.
Under the current code, a caretaker unit is optional. And we changed it to be required, because to me, it seems like that's the whole point of a bed and breakfast. And that's also one of the reasons why you might be comfortable having a hotel-like use in a residential zone. Because the, because the people live there, and so we made that a requirement as opposed to an option.
Plus, I think it it mitigates some of the possible.
The community would be more better served.
One other thing I forgot to mention, Letitia emailed me a question and wanted me to bring this up. That seventeen, and going back to the, the bigger non-conforming ordinance, sorry to jump around. Seventeen fifty-six oh five oh is a limitation on other uses, and this basically says. You can't, if you're non-conforming, you can't do anything except what it says you can do in here. And that, that could be very restrictive unless you're comfortable that the other parts in here that we have. Allow what we want to. And I think it does, but I, it's, it's, it's definitely worth just taking a step back and making sure. That we're really comfortable with that, because you don't want something that has a minor non-conformance to mean the property just doesn't ever change.
Well, so what, what is this really saying here? Okay, so, so long as a non-conforming use exists. Use or structure exists upon a lot, so you have some sort of, it's either a use or, or the building, right? No new use or structure may be constructed, established or installed on a lot.
So you can't double up on non-conforming?
I mean, you can't double up on anything.
Right.
Right.
You couldn't even put a conforming structure.
No, you can't do anything.
Yeah.
But with the giant caveat, except as allowed by this chapter.
What do we allow in this?
So that really means, you, you, you know, you've gotta go to.
Additions, alterations.
Repair, maintenance, reconstruction under involuntary, and then alterations, additions and non-conforming use of structures, those two sections. And make sure that those cover them, and I, I think it does, because, you know, we've said, you can eliminate the non-conforming. Now we can reduce the non-conformity, you can do things to comply with code.
Um, but how on the, on the use side of the coin. Where would this, I'm trying to think, you know, residential, I mean, both non-residential, residential. What would this trigger? It would have to be a different use.
Well, it says.
Like, in the residential side, it's really just residential use. I don't think you're applying unless it's like business professional or something, right?
Right, I mean, no, you.
You can't. Okay, so the use part doesn't even apply on the residential side?
No.
Really?
It's just structures.
Right.
Okay. On the commercial side or non-res, you couldn't double up on a use, I guess, if, if you have a non-conforming use?
You couldn't put another use there as well, an additional.
So, if this says on a lot, so let's imagine you have a lot which has a building which has several units in it. One of which is non-conforming. Does that mean if someone moves out of another unit and someone new moves in, you can't have a new use in the other part of the building?
New non-conforming use.
No, it says.
No.
No new use.
Yeah, it could be a conforming use, but you can't have it.
That mean you couldn't have a new conforming use in the other unit in that building?
Well, in your scenario, you're describing like an R three or something, like a.
Or, or say it's a.
Commercial.
A commercial, a commercial.
Center or office, office thing.
Yeah, you couldn't.
We have one in town on Montecito, that's a number of small units.
I mean, I don't know if this situation even exists, but just imagining that it exists, it means that the other person couldn't move out and have a new use move in. That seems not where we're trying to go.
No, well, based on this limited language, I would say that's correct, they can't.
And that's not what we wanna do.
Unless we're missing something, because.
Says on the lot, I think on the lot is the. That's how I read this. No new use.
So is the lot, the entire lot or the subdivision lot, because the lot has. Well, in your assumption that the lot has smaller parcels or smaller elements on it?
Oh, it's like the, the strip mall, it's exactly like a, like on Montecito or something.
Building, that's all one lot.
Well, like, like, you know, like the, yeah, I mean, just some, like the, the old Ford dealership building.
Good, good for you. Hasn't been a Ford dealership since the fifties, excellent, good use of Sierra Mountain history.
Building, but I mean, imagine it's non-conforming in some way.
Yep.
Which it very well could be, I don't know, but, you know, there's all those units in the back. So that means if we have one of those units with a non-conforming business in it, you can't change out the other units for someone else? That's how I read this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what it means by no new use, or does it mean?
No new.
One way. That you can continue to do that, cause that's the same use.
Well, the same use.
In there, cause it's, if it's for the same use.
Yeah, I think you're right, like, if it's the same thing, you know, if it's a salon and it leaves and then another salon comes in, that's fine. But if it changes from a salon to.
Retail.
Solar panel distributor, I don't know, something, you know, no.
Well, that's just.
But, I mean, really, it comes down to, I mean, like, how do you, how do you guys read that, cause if the.
How would be, how would it be read at the table, at the desk?
Counter.
At the counter.
Business use.
Yeah, I, what difference does it really make if?
Change the use.
Change the use. Okay.
But, but again, change, but if you changed.
To a different use.
To a different use, but a use that's conforming, so if you went.
Okay.
So you, you've got your technical non-conformance somewhere on the property, right? And then you change from, you know, office use to Pilates.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Okay.
That's, is that, if that's a new use, then that's.
It is a new use.
Well, are, are they, are those two, those, those are good examples, but are, I haven't gone back and read for this, but. Are, are they all under the same. Use as defined in the, in the zoning code? I mean, are they both business or are they different?
Because retail versus office are different uses.
You'll see when we come to the commercial code next, there's a laundry list of uses.
Right.
And, and one is not the same, even, even if it's under the same general category.
Well, I, I know, but, but some of those would be, some, some of those changes would be fairly irrelevant for our.
Well, that's what I'm arguing.
Right.
I, I'm arguing they would not be relevant, but here they're not permitted.
We don't, we don't want the zoning code to say you can't change from a karate studio to a Pilates place, because those are two separate uses.
And they're right.
Cause nobody cares if you've got a karate studio versus a Pilates, right? I mean, effectively, they're the same.
It's the same building.
Yeah, it really isn't, it, it really isn't.
Doesn't impact the outside of the, what's going on around the outside of the building that much.
No, and, and I'm trying, I'm just trying to parse out here what's, what's really a, a defined difference in use per our zoning. Versus what's just, eh, eh, you know, different, like a, like a pizza place to a sushi restaurant, you know, big deal.
A restaurant use is a, is a permitted use. A, 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 a fitness studio is a permitted use.
But they're different.
But they're different uses.
Yeah.
You know, a, a, a retail is different than some kind of sports oriented.
Restaurant always stands, always stands alone.
They were all permitted by this, you couldn't change from one to the other. And I think maybe what, what we may wanna do with this is so long as a non-conforming user structure exists on a lot, no new. Non-conforming use or structure may be constructed, I don't know if that's what it's trying to get to. Or is it trying to say, no, you can't change anything on that lot, except as a lot.
Well, I think it's, I, I think the idea is.
Covered, I think, I think the part at the end, except as allowed by this chapter, allows some things to happen on the structure side. It's the use side that's problematic.
Yeah.
It's too absolute, it's basically, I don't know if we wanna separate those two concepts.
Or, or if we wanna provide, i- if we go into. Seventeen fifty-six oh eight oh. At the end of that, which is F in the real version, but B in, in the red line. Alteration or enlargement of a non-conforming use, you know, maybe we add something there about. Uses in non-conforming structures or, I mean, somewhere in here, cause one of the, one of the things I like about. This, the oh five oh is that it's very broad and, and clear, you can't do anything, except for what you got.
Yeah.
Instead of trying to monkey with that language, I sort of like the concept of then going and adding the exception you want. And if so, the, the issue we have is uses, you know, having a, a conforming use.
Okay.
Maybe we could add in, in here somewhere. That you can do a conforming use.
Yeah, I mean, a conforming use, to me, it seems obvious should be permitted, because that's the whole point.
Even whether the structure's non-conforming or whether there's another non-conforming use on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But a conforming use would be allowed.
Forming use, it should always be allowed.
I'm okay with that.
The, or, you know, if it's a permitted use, it should be permitted.
So we'll.
Add a G. Even if it's different.
Add conforming use.
I don't know if it would be G, I think it would go under F, right?
E four.
Well, F four.
F four. Yeah, we might need to change the title a little bit of F, but. We can add that concept.
Okay.
I don't think we should write the language right now.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
But I think a conforming use.
It's a good, good catch.
Allowed, because it isn't.
Good catch. Okay.
Good.
This is what happens when you read it the twelfth time.
That's good.
Well, and, and when other people read it and point things out, because, you know, somewhere along the sixth or seventh time, you, you stop actually reading.
Yeah, your eyes.
I know, it recites in your head, it's going in your, yeah, it's playing in your head.
And that's why it's always helpful to have other people's input.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this section?
No.
Are we good to move on?
So, where does this go next, or how does it, we still have one more?
Well, I wanna bring this back as a public hearing with the.
I'm okay with that.
I think this, you know, we could wait until we get the commercial stuff all done and do as one big bundle, but I think this is, this works as is. And we've identified the one issue that there was crossover and we dealt with it. That was that holdover provision of institutional uses in commercial zone. So I'd rather take this to, to public hearing now and move it up to the city council while we, and so they can process that while we're still chewing on the commercial stuff.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, it's good progress.
And Vincent, I can ship you revised language really quickly, cause there's only a couple of changes there.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we come to the exciting part of the meeting.
And the, well, go ahead.
No.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is an analysis that was prepared by our city attorney and deputy city attorney. Regarding affordable housing bills, and we have a PowerPoint presentation, so you might want to. Your chair is over.
Okay.
Alright. Works. So on September twenty-ninth, the governor signed fifteen new bills. All fifteen, all related to affordable housing. To give you some background, there were a hundred and thirty related housing bills introduced this year. Fifteen were signed by the governor relating to affordable housing. Uh, so you can see there, there are senate bills, assembly bills, we actually won't talk about the ones with asterisk, asterisks next to them, there's. There are three assembly bills, so we won't be talking about today. The first is AB five seven one, that's farm worker housing, because there are no farms to my knowledge in Sierra Madre, is that right?
There's one.
There is one.
There is one.
There is one.
They don't have a lot of farm workers.
Yeah.
There's no house, existing housing.
So that may not be relevant, so we're gonna skip that one.
That's a safe call.
AB six seven eight is actually identical to SB one seven, one sixty-seven. So we'll actually be talking about that. AB one five two one, that's affordable, it's for, um, affordable housing developers. It gives them a first right of refusal when they wanna purchase properties. Uh, we're not gonna get into that, because that doesn't really pertain to what limitations the state has placed on the city. So. These statutes are not adopted as emergency statutes, so they'll take effect January first, twenty eighteen. And I'm just gonna recite a couple of facts, which I'm sure everyone here is probably aware of. But the general plan has to be adopted by every city, it's the premier zoning law in the city, um, or land use law. There are seven mandatory elements, uh, those include land use, open space, conservation, housing, circulation, noise and safety. Of those seven, the housing element is probably the most extensive and it's the only one that has to be updated on a fixed cycle. I'm gonna use a couple of terms, HCD stands for California Department of Housing Community Development. They're the ones that review the general plan. Uh, and RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, I'll get into that a little bit more later on in the slides, but. Just so you know, every, every city has to meet their RENA numbers, and how that's calculated is. The regional planning body, in this case, I believe it's SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governors, comes up with a number. And then they give that number to, that number's approved by HCD, and that number is, uh. That number's divided among the cities and all the cities have to meet their RENA numbers. Uh, RENA numbers are divided according to income category usually, uh, so that's. You have market rate housing, moderate income, low income, very low income. So there are two funding bills here, SB two is a seventy-five dollar fee on recording real estate transaction documents. It does not apply to, uh, home sales, it's primarily commercial documents. And, uh, that's seventy-five dollars per page, but the maximum is two hundred twenty-five dollars. So it's actually less than you might think.
Does that apply to liens?
That applies to liens, yes, if you're going to record that with the county, yes. And then that's expected to raise between two hundred and three hundred million dollars per year for affordable housing. The other is SB three, SB three authorizes a four billion dollar bond, uh, four billion dollar bond. That actually requires voter approval. So, and then we'll all have an opportunity to vote on that in the November election, I believe. So I, the, one of the first preliminary steps you take in drafting your housing element is you have to list. You have a listing of your land inventory. So what that means is basically, you have to list and describe lands suitable for residential development. Um, AB thirteen ninety-seven limits the types of properties that may be listed. So you can see on the left-hand side, those, tho- that's a description of what needs to be listed, so vacant site zone residential. Vacant site zone, non-residential, but allows for residential development. Non-vacant site zone residential, but capable of higher density. And non-vacant site zone, non-residential, but capable of residential development. Now, the problem, I guess the state was having is, a lot of people are list, a lot of cities were listing sites. But the sites couldn't realistically be developed for housing, because either there was some kind of easement. Or there was some, something preventing the property from being, it was part of, part of some specific plan that prevented the property from being developed. So the state rewrote the law, and it reads as follows. An inventory of land suitable and available for residential development, including vacant sites and sites having. And it struck out the language potential for development and replaced it with realistic and demonstrated potential for re. and it struck out the language potential for development and replaced it with realistic and demonstrated potential for redevelopment during the planning period to meet the locality's housing need for a designated income level. So the state's placing a lot of emphasis also on the income level. And I'll get to that a little bit later on in the slides as well. So some of the limitations include the property can't be too large, over ten acres. It can't be too small, less than half an acre. They don't want vacant sites that are recycled over two planning periods. There are exceptions for these, of course, but they're limited. There are narrow exceptions. Non-vacant sites identified in a prior housing element and utilities available, and they, and they, there need to be utilities that are available and accessible to the properties. Now that, that doesn't place a burden on the city to provide utilities, but if you're going to list a property in your inventory, there need to be utilities because without utilities, you can't realistically develop it.
What do you do if you have a water moratorium and you don't have any water utility available?
Terry and I were talking about the same problem. To tell you the truth, we don't know. We, we suspect H C D may make an issue of it. And then we'll have to discuss it with them at that time when we submit our housing element. But we don't have to submit that for a while. I believe. It says, we're in our fifth cycle and we completed our housing element in twenty fourteen, so we're good until twenty twenty-one.
And so none of the housing bills automatically put a new review on our housing element. It's only if we somehow are non-compliant.
Correct. We have to be non-compliant with our housing element, but there's an annual review process. We, and then I'll also get to that.
And please explain how, how would it, we, how would we become non-compliant?
So when you, well, actually, that's the next slide. Oh, it's actually the slide after this, so if you're willing to wait.
I can, I can hold it though.
All right. All right. So the housing element must identify and analyze governmental and non-governmental constraints on residential development projects. The housing element has to actually address a couple of things. One of them, or some of them include non-governmental and governmental constraints. So on the left-hand side there, we've listed a couple of governmental constraints. Land use control, controls, building codes, local processing and permit procedures. To give you an idea, non-governmental constraints may include inadequate funding, community resistance, so like nimbyism, market conditions, cost of construction. And so A B eight seventy-nine does is it requires this analysis to address some additional factors. So for example, ordinances affecting the cost or supply of residential development. That's something that needs to be reviewed now or needs to be discussed and analyzed in the housing element. Request to develop housing at lower densities. Now, if there's a request to develop housing at lower densities, that demonstrates a lack of demand to build at higher densities and which may suggest some non-governmental constraints there. Length of time between approval of housing development and applying for the building permit and local efforts to remove non-governmental constraints. So not only do we have to discuss what those constraints are, we have to discuss what we're doing to get rid of them. Now, when you draft your housing element, this goes to your question earlier, Commissioner Hut, I mean, Commissioner Spears. When you draft your housing element, you need to submit that to the H C D for review, which will determine whether or not you're in compliance with the housing element law, which is found in the government code. If you are not in compliance, your housing element will not be certified and you may be subject to legal challenge. There's also other issues involved. For example, a property's, the, a permit decision usually, I believe, can't be challenged, or it can be challenged for, I think, ninety days. That extends it further out if you don't have an approved general plan. So cities are required to zone land to accommodate their entire arena. But cities face limited consequences for failing to adopt complying housing elements or for complying with the exist, or for complying with their adopted housing element. So when H C D reviews one of these housing elements and before adoption, it finds out that you're not meeting your R E N A, you have to rezone properties within three years in order to meet your R E N A. If you don't, then, then, then the projects that are, the affordable housing projects will be approved ministerially. So that means without a public hearing, without CEQA. And it says, H C D does not enforce provisions of adopted housing elements. And that changes with A B seventy-two. A B seventy-two gives H C D more authority to force cities to comply with their housing element. And so H C D reviews cities' actions after adoption of the housing element for consistency. And those actions also include inactions. So if the city is required to, let's say, for example, rezone and they haven't, they can review that. It's not clear how often they review that and what initiates the review, but they have the authority to do so. And then the things that they need to, they need to comply with include their housing element, inventory of sites, the programs to rezone. If the action or inaction is found to be inconsistent, H C D may revoke prior compliance findings. So let's say the housing element was approved. It's a couple of years out and you haven't done what you were supposed to do. They revoke your compliance finding, which they couldn't do before. And again, now you're subject to potential suit. So there's an annual reporting requirement and. So after the housing element is adopted, the city must submit an annual report to inform stakeholders about the progress being made in meeting their housing element goals. This report is usually due around April first and must be submitted within sixty days of the due date. It's submitted to the city council, the governor's office of planning and research, and H C D. The annual report must include, among other things, implementation of the general plan, progress in meeting the city's R E N A numbers, efforts to remove governmental constraints to development. A B eight seventy-nine and S B thirty-five expand the scope of the report, of the reporting requirement. So it adds more criteria. And it also makes charter cities now responsible to report as well. Before this, burden was only on general law studies like Sierra Madre. Now charter cities also have to report. And they have to report on the number of housing development applications received, number of proposed units and applications, number of units approved or rejected, listing of rezone sites, number of new rental for sale housing units issued entitlements, building permits, certificates of occupancy.
And this is all units at every price level?
Right. Correct.
And do these, this expanded scope, that starts for the report for the year two thousand seventeen?
Yes. No, two, twenty eighteen. Well.
The report that's due in two thousand eighteen for two thousand seventeen?
Correct.
So hypothetically, let's say a city hadn't done the reports before that date. And then they go to make them up. Would they do it under the former law or the expanded law?
You would do it under the expanded law.
Starting January one?
Janu, well, April first is, well, a hundred and, or sixty days after April first is a deadline. Is the, is the latest deadline by which you could submit it. So, yeah, starting January one would be the effective date of the statute and you'd have to submit it between April first and.
So if there was reporting of prior dates, it would be a good idea to get it done before the end of the year so we could do it under a former law. I mean, it seems a lot easier, right?
I don't think you can do that because I think there is a reporting period. And I don't know, I have to check, but I, the reporting period might end after the, the calendar year ends. I mean, right, after the calendar year ends, so you'd have to include some of twenty eighteen as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm talking about like, let's say you're gonna report for two, for twenty fourteen. And you were supposed to do that in twenty fifteen, but you know, you didn't.
Just saying.
Just saying, right? It would be good to get that done in twenty seventeen under the former law instead of in twenty eighteen under the expanded scope.
I, maybe I'm not miss, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I don't think you need to report for twenty fourteen because it's a yearly report. It's an annual report, so you'd only be, be reporting on what you did for the prior year.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you, but the thing is, if you didn't, if you didn't do your annual reports and you wanna go back and make them up.
Right. I can get back to you on that.
But you don't need, but the annual report requirement doesn't, you know, there was those prior years you don't need to report for until this kicks in, right?
No, you needed, you needed to report this, this stuff. It's just now.
There's always an annual.
Yeah, now you, you have to do more stuff.
Got it. Okay.
It's a point of reference for future.
Yeah. So, but you're sa, really saying like to sneak in like last year, twenty seventeen.
No, I'm saying twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen because, you know.
But as, as you'll see, you don't really face consequences for not reporting unless you've not, if you haven't reported for two years straight. So if you were to report this year, for example, then if you report this year, you might, you'll, you'll mitigate any consequence for not having reported in the past.
But the consequences start in twenty eighteen.
Right.
But the, but the previous numbers are reference numbers for future evaluation.
Right.
So it's to our advantage to make sure that our, whatever, whatever they understand about our numbers, we do it under the most flexible conditions.
Right.
And if our housing element was certified in twenty fourteen and our first reporting period was for twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen?
You'd report in twenty fifteen for the prior year, yeah.
Cause that's the first year of the cycle.
Right.
Cause everybody's on that cycle except for A BAG because they gotta delay.
All right. So there's a no net loss zoning statute in the code. Under no net loss zoning, a city is prohibited from reducing residential density to a point below the density that was utilized by H C D in reviewing the city's housing element. Unless the city makes written findings supported by substantial evidence that the reduction is consistent with the adopted general plan and the remaining sites identified in the housing element are adequate to accommodate the jurisdiction share of R E N A. So here, the law seeks to prevent a net loss of residential unit capacity. But it does not address the effect of the city's development approvals on R E N A. So as you can see, I've noted a problem there. If the property is zoned, if it's a multifamily property zoned for, for affordable housing and instead you develop it with market rate housing, before there was nothing that H C D could do about it. Now it's a bit different. Under A B one sixty-six, it requires that if a city permits development with fewer units by income category than identified in the city's housing element, it must be, it must make required findings that the city has the, so it must make required findings and the findings are the same as the ones I had stated earlier. But the city does have the authority now to reject development applications under this section if it'd be forced to violate R E N A or if it couldn't meet its R E N A numbers. Now, the city could also approve it, but if the city approves it, then within, within a hundred eighty days, it needs to rezone for additional sites to meet its R E N A numbers. Does that make sense?
So the R E N A numbers are the real benchmark for what other kinds of development?
Correct.
At every income level.
At, correct.
At every income level.
Right. Right.
I have a question on that. Given the kind of residential zoning that we have here, could that requirement in, in effect be rezoning to, to reduce the, the property value? And could this force us into the position of, of being accused of taking from, from the property owner? Is it, is it economically suppressing the value of that property if we, if we, if we had to do that?
So you're, you're saying if you zoned for prop, if you zoned property to make it affordable, are you, are you conducting, are you doing taking? Is that your question?
Yeah, right. If we had to go and, and compensate by, by rezoning something, something else.
The, the answer generally would be no. Because unless the property's, unless the property's value is diminished almost completely, you're not gonna have a taking. Taking is very, it's a very lenient standard for a regulatory taking. So if you had to rezone in order to meet your R E N A numbers and you didn't, if it wasn't like ninety percent of the value of the property, then you, I don't think you would have a problem.
Well, I know that the, you know, that, that the numbers for making affordable housing work are extremely tight. And in the case of one that was done here recently, if, if the property hadn't been donated, it wouldn't have flown at all. So I really, I really have a question.
Keep in mind, Joe, that the, in that case, the property was donated and they needed a subsidy from the county. So just giving them the property wasn't even enough.
Yeah, so, you know, it, it really seems as though, uh, these are, you're putting a property into a potential serious economic squeeze and, and, and could this force us into a lawsuit with that property owner by, by having to comply with this?
Well, I think.
Do they care?
No, a state doesn't care. That's, that's our problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it, we might be between a rock and a hard place, but too bad. You know, this is what the state says.
Just, just wondering.
So I think this next statute had people very worried. But I'll explain how it maybe doesn't really impact Sierra Madre just that much. So ministerial permit review only assesses whether a project is consistent with existing general plan and zoning rules as well as whether it meets the standards for building quality, health and safety. So it's really just like a checklist of items that, that the development needs to meet. Now, S B thirty-five creates a steam, streamlined ministerial approval process for any multifamily housing project that meets a very long list of criteria with numerous exceptions. But to give you an example, for, or rather, the, the elements that need to be met in order for this to apply are the project needs to be multifamily, meaning two or more units. It needs to be affordable. It needs to meet state and local standards. The site has to be zoned residential and near an urban area. An urban area is defined by the United States Census Bureau, so it's a very specific definition. The city failed, and the city needs to have failed to meet its R E N A or failed to submit an annual report for two consecutive years. So I was just on a, I was just participating in a webinar today about these housing statutes. And the experts on the panel believe that almost every city is going to fall within S B thirty-five. But they'll also probably fall within a certain exemption. So for example, in the case of Sierra Madre, portions of the city that are, that are within very high or high fire hazard severity zones are exempted from S B thirty-five. And Vincent, do you know, do you remember off the top of your head which, which part of Sierra Madre that was?
Grand View.
Yeah.
Grand View is a dividing line, north of Grand View.
Yeah.
Is that very high or?
It's the highest, very high sever, uh, severity.
But it means that most, most of the multifamily zoned portion of town is not in that. Just Grand View up is almost all single family.
So what's below, if, if above Grand View is very high, is below Grand View high or something lesser?
Medium? Low?
Sure. I haven't heard anything about that.
I, I read that in what, in the report. I'm like, oh, that's gonna apply to at least part of Sierra Madre.
Yeah.
So remember, it's, it's for affordable housing and, well, here's the, here's the challenge for developers is that they have to have a certain number of affordable units and they need to pay prevailing wages. And so that's, that's.
But there's exceptions for projects of ten and under.
Correct. Small projects.
And the, the issue is, that's what we do. I mean, I don't know, we're gonna get very many more projects in town that are eleven plus. Most of our projects are gonna be.
Two or three or four.
Four, six, eight. How much was the one that we did on Mariposa?
Yeah, that was like.
That was eight or something, right? That was eight or something, right? Six or eight, so, you know, the problem is there's exceptions, but then there's exceptions to the exceptions and. And, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of happiness in town if. Multifamily projects are reviewed without any discretionary review. I think that's, that's not something that we want to find ourselves in the position of.
The, this is two or more, so like, basically like a duplex.
A duplex.
Would be ministerial.
Well, one, one other question is, you know, this gets into the definition of what a unit is. Um, is a second unit on a house mean that you now have a multifamily property?
I think the zone, underlying zone would define that, right?
Well, if that's all being turned upside down because, you know, now the second unit ordinance is right, granny flats and so forth. It, it basically, it, it, it basically just corrupts the idea of R one zoning, so where, where are we really there?
Most of our empty space, our developed spaces above Grandview. So whatever, if we, if, if this is going to apply, it's gonna apply to something down in the city. In other words, something else, something's gonna have to get removed in order.
No, I, what, what, where, where, I think this comes into play for, for us, or could, is stuff along. Like Mariposa and that where there's a lot of single family, but it's all zone multifamily. And so, and, and you have, it's not vacant land, it's land that's under its current density. So people demo whatever single family's there and they wanna build, you know, six or eight, whatever that was, the same kinda concept. Or, you know, the property behind the library.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, yeah, I don't, I, we, we need to make sure we don't get caught in the ministerial review trap. I think that's really important for us.
Well, two things, one, one is that, you know, in the nineteen ninety-seven general plan, uh, they, they had. Evaluated like, uh, areas of town that had very, very small parcels, but had R three mapping. And, um, uh, and, and they found ways to reduce a lot of those to R two, just. You know, anticipating that we were gonna get jammed at some point, uh, but that, uh, that being able to, to. Build R three multifamily was just like out the window, it was so impractical given the size of the parcels, right? So, you know, we, we may still be in that kind of.
Well, we, we also dealt with a lot of that in our recent revamp of R three, where we had specific provisions for small parcels. So that we wouldn't come into that issue.
Is this the, the, one of the biggest trigger points for the city?
That the city failed to meet its Rena numbers?
This for our city?
Oh.
Whether, the Rena numbers or the failure to submit?
The submit report, that's what our issue is.
I, I think, are we the, are, is that where we are most vulnerable?
Um, Vincent, I don't know, maybe you'd.
I, I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, cause I mean, the, once we get our reports in, I think we're, we're fine on our Rena numbers for market rate. It's the affordable ones we don't, I mean, I, I don't know how many second units we have, which probably we could qualify as moderate, but.
Nine.
Nine, and then, nine and then we had, that might be enough, and then we have three of the, um, ha, uh.
The, the Highland News is moderate income, so.
Yeah, but we don't have any very low, right?
What's our number?
Or low?
Number.
A hundred and thirty-eight, but that includes everything.
Oh, no, everything, but just.
But that was, that was the prior cycle, wasn't it? I thought, let me, I thought it was fifty-five in the current.
I mean, I've, uh.
Yeah, and the current housing element, it talks about fifty-five. With twenty-three market, which is not an issue. Moderate, nine, low, nine, very low, fourteen, so. It's, it's the affordable ones that are, and we might even get moderate, but it's, I don't think we have any, since, since the senior. Housing project was done, I don't think we have any very low or low.
Can I ask a question about SB thirty-five? So does this mean, does that apply to?
Moderate.
How, does that apply to all housing projects would be ministerially reviewed?
And high.
If you don't meet those criteria, or.
Affordable housing projects, yes, affordable housing projects.
So I guess.
But this is moderate.
So it's moderate, low and very low.
Not the yellow, but this, the orange and the red.
Correct.
And what if no one does that?
Then it doesn't apply.
Also, Alex, you know, it, it. This is all, this is all written with, with, you, you know, with some kind of, uh, uh, some kind of attitude. That cities are naturally gonna wanna weasel out of the, uh, out of the requirements, right? Okay, saying that, well, if you don't do this, then, ha ha, no, no pub, we can, you can be jammed, no, no public hearing. Uh, what if, what if we turned around and said, uh, yeah, okay, uh, so you, you caught us. But, you know, uh, our city, we wanna have a public hearing anyway about the whole thing. Can, can we do it, or, or are they saying that you're just jammed, you're gonna have to? You, you can't even have any public input.
Public hearing, but you can't make any choice.
I.
You can talk about anything you want, they can't stop you from talking, but they can stop us from making a decision on something.
So we could, so we could have, we could have public discussion.
Waste our time with a public hearing, but it would, it would serve no purpose except to get people right up.
It may, there, there may be an issue, I mean, I can see how a developer would not want his project to be stalled. And so if there was a public hearing and let's say we continued it and had another one and. I can see how the developer may sue under the government code to enjoin us from having a public hearing. So I think that's a possibility.
Well, I'm just saying, you.
We can, I mean, your point is taken, yes, yeah, your point's well taken, yeah.
It wouldn't have any effect on the approval of the project, and so. The project will be moving along ministerially and we could be standing here talking about it forever.
But it says we can do design review, but then it says. The design review shall be objective and strictly forced, focused on accessing compliance and criteria. So it's like, how do you do objective designer, that doesn't, that doesn't work, I don't, I don't understand how that.
Right, you have to include everything in your code.
If, if it has standards, you can put, hold it up against the standards, but you can't do anything else, probably.
Yeah, but that's just about ministerial, right there.
Right. Yeah.
Affordable meet state level.
Any other questions?
So, but, but, but the question I asked before, which is. So what if no one shows up and wants to build low, moderate income housing in your city?
Right. It's, it's not, then SP thirty-five is not an issue, no.
Someone has to.
So this is all predicated on someone wanting to make it, do the development?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
And pay the prevailing wages if it's, if they have more than, uh, ten dwelling units that they're gonna develop.
Okay.
And the exception there is, the, this is the only exception, I'm sure there's other exceptions.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can go through them.
The only one that seemed most applicable.
I mean, when I looked at it, yeah, but now looking at it now, maybe the earthquake fault zone, I'm not sure.
There is a portion up that does have an earthquake fault zone.
We, we are, also runs down Grandview.
Yeah.
Flood plains, maybe.
But again, that's not gonna hit the R three.
Yeah, it's still not.
It's the multifamily zone that matters, you know, cause this isn't, this isn't gonna hit one carter.
No.
And when they say multifamily, they mean multifamily on one lot, right?
Correct.
It doesn't mean we're doing a track home of single family houses.
No.
Right, right, okay.
On a, on a given property.
Hillside or one carter or anything like that, this is just gonna hit us in the multifamily zone.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so there's a little, there's a little bit, there's a little bit of, of high zone that's actually below.
But very little.
Well, I, I should clarify, the map that shows the low, moderate and high. This map with the multicolors.
Yes.
Um, this is the original, and then this was revised, and I don't remember what year this was.
So this is the current?
To, and, and all that changed was maybe the very high delineation at Grandview. So they moved it to just be straight up, straight across Grandview.
So all this orange became red?
I think, yes.
And everything below Grandview went white.
Remains the same, it remains as it is in this map.
Got it.
Well, so there's still, I guess there's some little bit of Laurel, on the north side of Laurel that's zoned. R three, that's in the high fire zone, but.
That is correct.
But the, but the big majority of the R threes not in the.
Well below.
Got it opposite.
So the Housing Accountability Act, also known as the Anti-Nimby Law, prohibits a city from disapproving or conditioning approval. In a manner that renders infeasible an application for an affordable housing development project or an emergency shelter. Unless, one of the following apply. You must show that you have an approved housing element and have met or exceeded your Rena numbers. Uh, the development project would have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety. And there is no feasible alternative method to mitigate the adverse impact. Or proposed development is inconsistent with both zoning ordinance and general plan land use designations. So, the, there's, there are explicit findings in the statute that say. California housing has become the most expensive in the nation. The excessive cost of the state's housing supply is partially caused by activities. And policies of many local governments that limit approval of housing, increase the cost of land for housing. And require the high fees and exactions to be paid by producers of housing, so to your point, Commissioner Catalano. Uh, and then so it says SB one sixty-seven creates a higher evidentiary burden for an inconsistency determination. So you can see here, in order to find that the, uh, development is inconsistent with the general plan. It must now be based on a preponderance of the evidence, instead of substantial evidence. So which is a higher evidentiary burden, it's harder for the city to prove inconsistency. Also, in order to be deemed consistent, it takes away the, uh, the discretion that was previously there for the city. Because there was no standard before, and replaces that, well, and adds, in the absence of that, it adds a new objective standard. Whereby the court can determine, based on objectives, based on objective criteria. Whether it's substantially, whether there is substantial evidence under a reasonable person's standard, that's the objective standard used by courts. It's not all bad, there, uh, so. AB one five oh five, uh, is, was one of the statutes that was pushed by, was sponsored by the league and was. Um, adopted or was signed by the governor. Uh, so in two thousand nine, there was the Palmer Sixth Street Properties case versus Los Angeles. Uh, in that case, a developer, uh, who wanted to build affordable housing units. Sued the city of Los Angeles, because the city of Los Angeles tried to set. The mi, tried to, tried to set the rental housing rates for, I think it was like twenty percent of the rental housing. So they said, you can build this development. Uh, but you have to have a certain number of rental units, and the units have to be at a, the rate has to be at a certain rate. The court said that under the Costa Hawkins, Costa Hawkins Rental Housing Act. This effectively is a de facto rent control and it's inconsistent with the law, and so prevented cities from doing it. So cities that had these on the books either got rid of them or stopped enforcing them. Um, they tried to find ways around it, so for example, cities can still set the minimum sales price. For affordable housing units, and so some cities would try to say, well, you can either meet the sales price. Or you can choose to set a minimum or the maximum amount for rent, they tried to meet it these ways. Well, so, the holding in Palmer is no more, because AB fifteen oh five overturns the two thousand nine appellate court ruling. By expressly allowing cities to condition the development of residential develop, residential rental units. On the inclusion of a specified percentage of affordable units. If the city chooses to adopt such an ordinance, it must provide an alternative method of compliance. Such as in lieu fees, land dedication, offsite construction, and or acquisition rehabilitation of existing housing units. You find similar language, uh, for the, uh, inclusionary housing for sale ordinances. Uh, but HCD doesn't want this rental inclusionary housing ordinance to limit development. So they reserve for themselves the right to review these inclusionary housing ordinances. If it was adopted or amended after September fifteen, two thousand seventeen. The ordinance requires more than fifty pers, fifteen percent affordable housing, rental housing. And the city failed to meet seventy-five percent Rena in the past five years, or to submit housing element report. Or failed to submit the housing element report, uh, the annual one for the past two years. I think, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong Vincent, I think that Sierra Madre has a, a rental housing. Inclusionary rental housing ordinance on the books that it doesn't enforce, I think, am I right?
We, we have an optional, we don't have a required one.
It's not required.
Not required.
Okay.
And we recently discussed that, and before council, and we decided not to move that direction.
Yeah, I would think that, I don't know that, I mean, that if you're gonna require it, then. You're gonna have added density and added development bonuses that I don't know that there's a lot of people that really wanna go that route. But I don't understand how HCD thinks that imposing these, uh, income restrictions is not gonna chill development. Cause it, it siphons revenue away from the project, so of course it's gonna stifle development. I mean, it's, it's sort of like wish regulating, you don't, you can't change the market, you have to have a funding source to do this somehow.
You've got a pencil out.
Yeah, so.
So last two slides. Um, so the league also sponsored these two other statutes here. AB five forty and AB seventy-three. AB five forty creates the workforce housing opportunity zones. And AB seventy-three creates the housing sustainability district, so both of these, both.
Head's gonna explode.
Yeah, yeah, so, let's move past the jargon, both of these, really what they do is. They streamline the development of affordable housing, so they make you do all the work upfront. So when there are development applications, it's more or less ministerial. So you, they do that by creating a process where the cities dedicate a specific area. Where they will eliminate project-specific environmental review, so they do all the environmental review upfront. They provide economic incentives to spur development, and those economic incentives come from the state, there are grants and, uh, loans that you can get from the state for that. And you have, uh, but the city has reduced discretion to deny the specific projects in that specific area. So SB five forty authorizes cities to establish, like I said, those workforce hu- housing opportunity zones within a contiguous or non-contiguous parcels. Identified in the city's inventory of land. AB seventy-three, on the other hand, authorizes cities to adopt housing sustainability districts. Within an eligible location defined as an area within a half mile of public transit and served by existing infrastructure utilities. So, for AB seventy-three, the housing sustainability district, that's more for affordable housing near transportation. The workforce hu- housing opportunity zones, that's more like, think, you know, housing for teachers. If they can't afford to live in, let's say, Beverly Hills.
Or Sierra Madre.
Or anyone.
Sierra Madre.
Or anyone.
As a teacher, I could tell.
Yeah.
So just a comparison of these two side by side, uh, the method of adoption. Uh, the housing opportunity zones, you need to adopt it through your specific plan. You need to adopt a specific plan for the housing sustainability district, it's through an ordinance. Uh, one requires HCD approval, one does not. Both require ministerial issuance of permits, once the districts have been created, if there's development. If there's an individual development application, it needs to be ministerially approved, that's the whole point, really. Application approval deadlines, one sixty days, one, one's a hundred and twenty days. Uh, EIR required to, to approve zone district for both of them. EIR required for indivi- individual housing permits within district, none of them. Develop project within the zone district requires prevailing wages, again, both, the, all developments in those districts have to be. Um, paid at the prevailing wage rate. The term for these districts, so for the housing opportunity zone, five years, housing sustainability district, ten years. And here's the last slide, so there are financial incentives available, um, it's. They become available when the, the city has to, I mean, the state has to appropriate funds for it. Um, but, once the state appropriates funds, you can apply for grants, these are competitive, of course, grants or no interest loans. Uh, or you can also have zoning incentive payments, the way these zoning incentive payments work is. so the amount of the payment depends on the number of residential units constructed within the housing sustainability district. The first half of the payment will be distributed to the city upon approval of the ordinance and the issuance of the EIR. And the second half of the payment will be distributed within ten days after the building permits have been issued. Uh, you can have a percentage of your development dedicated to affordable housing. So you can have fifty percent of your affordable housing in these workforce housing opportunity zones, or or at least twenty percent of your units in the housing sustainability district. You can use both to meet your arena numbers, but you can only use fifty percent to meet your arena numbers for the workforce, workforce hop, housing opportunity zone. But you can use a hundred percent of it. You can meet a hundred percent of it rather, through the, through the housing sustainability district. And there's also limitations on development, so I don't, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see Sierra Madre making, taking advantage of the workforce hop, housing opportunity zone because the minimum is a hundred units. Seems like a big project.
That's a safe call.
Yeah, I mean, these are voluntary, right?
Voluntary.
Yeah, so I, I mean, even if-
The other was fifteen percent of the city's, that's a maximum.
For a single district, yeah.
Or that a m-
Fif- fif- fifteen percent of the city's total land area for a single district is, um,
Oh, I see.
No, that's, that's the, so thirty percent of the city's, that's a maximum, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a maximum.
So basically, when you showed us in the earlier slide, that there's um, the recording fee and then the potential bond revenues, this is how you get at those pots of money as a city, if you, if you want to. Or are there potentially other ways?
There, so I don't know, I gotta, I have to look that up for you, I don't know if those recording fees are gonna go to fund these programs. Uh, because when I read the statute, it didn't say that, so I don't know if that was a legislator's intent. It could be.
But basically, the, these are voluntary and, and the the way they're trying to, the state is trying to incent cities to adopt these is by giving them money.
Yeah, correct.
And go back a step, the money that they would give, the money goes to the city to use as they please, and the money goes to the city give to the developers to?
Subsidize.
Cr- right, it's, it's for subsidies like concessions or something for these uh, affordable housing developments.
So the money would get passed through to the affordable housing developers.
Right, but this, but the city would, otherwise the city would be paying some of those for the subsidies, right, those costs.
Yeah, okay.
Development costs.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
I think that's all I got. That's it.
That's enough.
That's clear as much.
That's enough.
Not, not, not your presentation, but the I guess, I guess my question, after you look at all this stuff, is how's this gonna apply to Sierra Madre? I mean, Sierra Madre has a very expensive land. Sierra Madre has a very small amount of land. Very unlikely that a developer is gonna wanna come in here and build very low income housing. And if we, if no one wants to come in here and build any because it's not economic, how's that gonna affect us?
It's a hard question for me because I'm not really familiar with Sierra Madre's land use history. Um, but your, your point is well taken, I mean, if there are no, this is all about affordable housing. And I mean, a lot of the statutes here have to do with a developer wanting to develop affordable housing units. The real struggle, I think, is where, because the city can only plan for it. It can't, the city's not going to create those affordable housing units, has, has to rely on the market to do that. So there's only so much the city can do. And if the city doesn't meet its numbers, it still may be liable because it might not get cer- its housing element might not get certified. So that's, I think, where the real struggle lies for Sierra Madre.
Is the arena numbers and the, and the reporting.
Well, and that we'll never meet the low or
Yeah.
Affordable housing numbers, because no one will wanna come and build.
Right, but, but it, it is, okay, but the background is that, that somebody wants to develop, and because we haven't met our numbers or done the reporting, then they would have uh, a minute, they would have less restrictions on them, but it, if it doesn't pencil out, it's moot.
Yeah. Right.
So the city hasn't ma- writ- done this reporting?
Right.
Is that, why?
Because it, but in the past, it was all, it was all carrot, I mean, it, it was required, right? But just like those, those weird zones things that are giant and we're never gonna do, it's, it's all tied into some carrot, and if we're not really gonna do it, and there's no downside, it's sort of like, yeah, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And so now the problem is we're faced with a, a world where there, there's some stick involved. And um, so you know, I, I think, it seems to me that step number one should be, we need to go back and do those reports, and we need to get them in because, you know, the, the housing element talks about how w- we get to claim for um, for the Kensington, we need, we get to claim seventy-five units. And that's for arena, but those are all market rate, right, but still, it means we get our market rate numbers.
Yeah.
So, and also, if our total is fifty-five, but we've produced seventy-five, I realize we're not doing as much of the affordable as the state wants, but at least we're we're, we're doing some development, you know?
Uh-huh.
And then if we have second units that are nine, you know, that's pretty close to our moderate.
It's the bottom.
It's the bottom, and that's, yeah, that's something that's, that's gonna require subsidies somewhere, that I, I, I've, I've, I've looked at development stuff, you don't build affordable housing without huge subsidies.
Right, and
So.
And you also, yeah, I mean, it's-
Well, under your predecessor, one of my suggestions that, because I can tell you as responding to medicals in this community is that if you, if you make the fire department and police department aware that you're looking for second units, because not all of them are apparent. That, that there are a number of second units out there that I think are below the radar. And I know there was an amnesty program that picked up some. But I'm not sure that um, City Hall is aware of all the other units that are out there, and quite honestly, I would, I would make the appeal to both the police department and the fire department because um, they get called to these units. And sometimes at two in the morning, you're standing in somebody's way backyard and you're looking at something that used to be a chicken coop and it's, you know, inhabited, and you're thinking, golly, I wonder how that got here.
Yeah, I think the other thing about this is that, is we, we saw, I, I don't remember the total number of bills that you said were signed, it was like fifteen or seventeen.
Fifteen, yeah.
But you said there was a hundred and thirty-something that were applied, and so there's gonna be more.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, next year, there's gonna be more, and then next year after that, there's gonna be more.
I think that the problem is there's let me first say that there is a crisis of housing in California. There's no question that, that this is a real problem. A big problem in the state as a whole. The problem is, it's a really different story for a little city than a great big city.
Yes.
If you're, you know, if you're Los Angeles, there's a lot of land there, and there's still places where you can build.
And there's a lot of turnover in the land.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of land, there's land in a, in a city of LA that doesn't cost a fortune as much as some other areas do. But when you come to little cities, especially built-out little cities, what are they thinking? They're not thinking about it. The, the, it doesn't, the, the applicability of this law in a place like this, or in a, you know, a lot of other little places is really curious, you know?
Well, I think you have an issue where you know, there's political battles in LA that some politicians decided would be easier to fix rather than dealing with LA City Council to, to lobby the state, and so they, they do their local zoning through, through the state legislature, and then you have other cities who, even though I think this, you know, affordable housing really is a problem, they don't comply, and they sandbag, and you know, we, we've updated our second unit ordinance to meet state code, and Pasadena still hasn't, and Pasadena do- doesn't allow, they have a radius restriction on said, second units, just like it was a liquor store, and it's like, that's gonna knock out tons of them.
Yeah.
And so you get this, this thing where you have battles between big cities and the state, and we get caught in the crossfire.
Yeah.
And so I think-
It seems, I mean, it seems, I mean, who knows how the state is gonna enforce this? Are they gonna waste their time coming after places like Sierra Madre? Where no one is gonna wanna come and build very low ha- housing? Are they gonna use their time more effectively on places where there is an opportunity to build housing, where people are nimbing up the kazoo, and, and they might actually get somewhere with it? That's the worry that a place like us has, you know, I mean, they could come after us and-
What are we supposed to do, build it ourselves?
Sierra Madre.
No, I, I think-
No, but we-
It's ridiculous.
We should probably report and, and try to make arena numbers, and I think there are ways that we can become closer to arena numbers, but I think a lot of the, what the trigger will be is if, if, if a developer is denied uh, the ability to develop, then they can appeal and we would be, we would lose, because if we haven't met the arena numbers or we haven't. So-
A pro battle.
Yeah.
I think it'd be difficult for HCD as they're currently composed to enforce a lot of this stuff, because they're a small department in the state. So unless they hire a ton of enforcement staff, I don't know how they're gonna do it across the state, because no city, or very few cities, are actually meeting their arena numbers. So I, I'm curious to see how the state actually gets this done.
I, I think that-
How many cities are there in California?
Four hundred and something, I think.
And there's over a hundred in LA County alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, eighty-eight, there's, well. Okay, well, yeah, I thought they were eighties.
I mean, I think we, we've got two issues where we've got two problems. One is if the state decides to clamp down on us, which probably is not gonna happen because we're sort of a small fry, it's not worth it, unless they decide to make us a test case, just to sh- pound someone to show that they can.
Yeah.
Um, or if some developer figures out that they can sue us and get whatever project they want.
Yeah.
A- and I, I think one of the big issues we have is we can't just plan for what the current, what, what currently is the state law, more stuff is gonna happen.
Yeah.
And I think the big issue we've had in the past is we've done, we've had uh, a consultant come in and do our housing element, and it's become a shelf document that we don't look at, and we don't even think about it as the general plan. You know, we think of the, the real general plan and this thing that the state made us do. And we need to stop thinking that way, and we need to think about them as part, and you know, w- we just updated R three, and I didn't even look at the housing element. I don't know if there's some part in there that said, oh, when you update your multifamily, you should look at these things.
Mm-hmm.
And so we probably should, you know, we probably should go through the list of things in the housing element that says, we're gonna take these uh, steps and see if we've done them, or why we haven't done them, and what we can do, and I know one of them is to do another amnesty program for second units.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think if, you know, if we report, if we do our reporting, if we say, look, we've reviewed our housing element and we've done what we're supposed to, and we've done more than our arena numbers on market rate, you know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna come after us then, but if we just-
Ignore them.
Yeah, or
Mm-hmm.
you know, tell them to pound sand, uh, that's, that's a bad thing to do.
One of the problems with the, it's not really a problem, it was reasonable, but, but one of the, the reasons why uh, we didn't get everything we would have liked to out of the last amnesty program was because of the, this very reasonable requirement that um, uh, you have to upgrade to meet certain aspects of building code uh, i- if you're, if you're going to be legitimized, right? Uh, I, I know of some instances, you were talking about finding the chicken coop in the backyard. I, I know of instances that were absolutely uh, ridiculous with uh, with, with homemade.
A little south of you?
Uh. One, one well south of, of me. I, I don't know which one you're referring to, you know, this-
A little south on the other side of the road.
And uh, no, I'm thinking of another one, but yeah, that, yeah, um, but the green one, right? Uh, the, the point is that I, I know of, of at least a couple of instances where where, where the, the building code-related problems uh, with a garage conversion were just really egregious.
Mm-hmm.
But the, uh, but the, the property owners um, uh, did not wanna spend the did not wanna spend the, uh, the money to do the, the upgrade, and uh, as, as far as I know, they're still being illegally occupied right now, and, and, you know, it never counted.
Yeah, and, and those are the ones that we used to see in the fire department, you know, we'd, we'd be there for, you know.
But we had a big, when we updated second unit ordinance, we had a big discussion about code compliance, and I think it was-
Kind of a line in the sand.
I- i- it's, it's, it's more about, you know, health and safety stuff, it's not, it's, it's sort of the same concept of, you know, if you do a small remodel on your house, you don't have to bring the whole house up to code. W- we didn't require people to bring the house up to fully, or the second unit fully up to code, we just wanted to make sure that health and safety.
Well, I'm talking about where infill on a, on a, on a partially completed wall was just infilled with junk and you could see daylight through it, it's-
Yeah, well, some places people shouldn't be living, I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah, I, I did mean egregious, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna have to be proactive at some point and begin to figure out what we need to do as a city to stay ahead of the, of what is obviously a trend. And, you know, but, uh, one would hope that our, meeting our arena numbers and making sure we report would be a good start.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, going forward, what, what we should do um, as a, the, both the planning staff and the planning commission is um, obviously, the, the, the reports, and if we can get those caught up, or, or at least do two thousand fourteen. Because two thousand fourteen has the seventy-five units from the Kensington. If we could do that, then we're meeting our market rate arena numbers, and that's, that's at least a good story.
Good faith.
Um, um, the other thing is you know, probably no time soon, because the holidays are coming up and whatnot, but sometime in the next year, we should have a meeting where we go over compliance of the action items in the housing element. We, we should say, okay, where are we on this one? Because I know there's some of them in there, like, there's a handyman program we're supposed to establish, and I don't think we've done anything about it.
I remember that.
And, and, you know, there's probably something where we can hire, or do some joint deal with somebody, the county, or I don't know what, but, but it doesn't, you know, a lot of these programs are things that little cities don't do all by themselves, but we should be able to partner with somebody.
Excellent.
Am I able to ask a question?
We're about to go to oral communication.
It deals with this, it doesn't deal with out of the subject area, it deals with the discussion that you're having? Is that a possibility?
Okay, we'll open it to public comment, quickly.
Quick question, is the town able to up the ante and then push back on the arena numbers? Since those were determined to be high in the first place? And then submit to the state how they came about those numbers? So that they have to give and take also with Sierra Madre, because um, I believe those numbers were quite high, and they really didn't prove or show why they how they attained those numbers in the first place. And then another quick question, I was not clear on, I think it was the AB seventy-two. Isn't that similar to a regulatory taking? To me, that sounded very much like the state is doing, requiring up and down zoning. So, I wasn't really clear on that when you were going through that. In the Kensington, I don't know, since those are not bedrooms, if that would, if they would be able to be counted or not.
That's, that's what our housing element says, um, according to our, you know, expert consultant.
They were never counted as bedrooms.
Yeah, but they, but they meet the definition
No, that was a big, big argument.
Of dwelling units, so.
They weren't supposed to be built on the boulevard if they were bedrooms. That was a big, big no-no.
Well, they're not, they're not built on the boulevard, they're, they're above and behind. That's how we allow m- uh, mixed use in the commercial.
Downtown area.
Yeah.
No, those were suites, not bedroom, that was a big fight that lasted for a couple of sessions.
Okay.
They've been changing the wording lately, so, that's why it's kind of like, it might be the hard place because those are not bedrooms, so it can't be counted.
I'm just reading what the housing element says, that was approved by HCD. So if HCD approved our housing element that says we can count them, we should count them.
We absolutely should, and not go back to an old fight and try to revive it.
Right. I, I'm not trying to fight any fight about whether something's a suite or a unit for our zoning code. I'm saying, HCD counts it, let's count it.
Yeah, work with us, please.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it, and we have some work to do. Okay, so, at this time, oral communication, is this opportunity, again, another opportunity for anyone to address the planning commission on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, and, any communication from the- Okay, and, any communication from the planning commission? I have one item. I wanna commend the staff, because, uh, a small miracle has occurred in town. We have a property on East Montecito that was out of compliance for about as long as I've been coming to these meetings. That has, it had a balcony that was over the-
The cantilever?
Over the sidewalk.
And what was happening underground was even scary.
Well, the, the underground, I think, is yet to be resolved, but at least the public does not have to walk by a, that structure anymore, and that's been resolved, so. I commend staff. And I, I, uh, support your continuing progress on these issues.
You should commend legal counsel.
You know what?
Are you saying that-
We're only looking for, we were looking for results, how it happened.
Are you saying the cantilever no longer exists?
That it does not.
That's correct.
Just wondering when that would happen.
You and a lot of other people, I was- So, so it's, it's nice to know, it's nice to see that we, we're, we're moving also the housing, or the buildings into compliance. That's good. We have a number of others that I'm sure are working their way through the system, so, good. Anything else from members of the commission? From staff?
Just, uh, wanted to point out that our next meeting actually falls on the same date, December seventh, as the Sierra Madre honorees dinner. Matt Buckles, I did notify him, I haven't heard back if he's going to be in attendance, but he would be one of the people that would be recognized for serving one complete term. So, it's up to the commission whether or not we wanted to, I won't be, I, I will have to attend that meeting.
Are we gonna have a meeting on the twenty-first? Is that theoretically scheduled?
That's up to the commission, I was suggesting that we cancel the December seventh meeting, or Letitia can run it, and we would bring back the non-conforming uses ordinance as a public hearing.
Is it possible that we could combine the seventh and the twenty-first and put them on the fourteenth? Or is that, or, or is us moving days not allowed? It just seems like, I don't think the twenty-first is gonna happen.
I don't, I don't think so either. I mean, we could hold a special meeting, yes, we can do that.
Is that? Because it seems like the seventh, people are gonna wanna go to this and, and-
I've already RSVP'd, because I figured if Matt shows up, that, you know, somebody should represent them.
And, and no one's gonna wanna go to the one on the twenty-first, that's, you know, the day before school gets out.
Yeah, that, I'd have, we would have to check the calendar, because there are other commissions, that might be using the room, and we'd have to see if they're cancel, canceling on the fourteenth. But, I, we'll, we'll double check on that and let you know.
Okay, we'd like that. I, I will not be here, because I, I, I said I was gonna go to this meeting. Also, the city, remember, combined two of their dinners into one for this?
Could you make it on the fourteenth?
Yeah, I could probably make it on the fourteenth.
That's why I was saying, if we moved to the, just had one, it seems like, because I, I fear what we're gonna do is, we're gonna-
Time out.
We're not gonna have a quorum on either day.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to come to the twenty-first, but if it, but I understand that there's, it's a busy time of year. Okay, so, you're gonna get back to us on that. Anything else from staff?
So, um, are we gonna cancel December seventh?
Okay, what's our pleasure?
Well, mm.
Depends on whether we're gonna get the combined meeting or not.
What, what would be on the agenda for the seventh?
Now, we would, I'd have to check, uh, the noticing requirements to bring back a public hearing, I have to notice for two weeks prior to the meeting. Right. And then, we have another week after that, so we don't have a, um, packet that goes out next week, it'll go out the following week. So, but, yeah, we have three working days next week.
Okay.
And then, we would have to get the packet out the following week.
Okay.
We, we might not even be able to do a public hearing on the seventh, it sounds like, it sounds really tight.
It doesn't sound like that's not going to work.
And that's, there's nothing else u- u- up for that agenda, there's no projects.
Um, no.
Okay, well, that seems to be a confluence of-
Yeah.
-opportunity.
Yeah.
It sounds like we should cancel the seventh, and then move the twenty-first to the fourteenth if we can.
Right.
I, I mean, is-
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I could come to the twenty-first.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to come to twenty-first if you needed to.
I'm not going anywhere, again, so.
So, can we leave it to staff to see if that can be po- possible?
Yes.
We'll pass on the seventh and see if we can do something on the fourteenth, in lieu of the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we did the twenty-first, would we have a quorum?
We can, Jen is, Jen is very good about checking.
I'm just curious if we know right now.
I, I'm, I'm a maybe, or travel plans are still in flux.
Yeah.
I could do fourteenth.
Looks like we might not have one for the twenty-first.
So, you have one, two.
I'm not sure, honestly.
I can, I'm a yes for that date, you're a yes.
Right now, on the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the fourteenth is no problem.
Actually, can you, can you send us an email to poll? Because I'll promise you anything right now, and tomorrow I won't remember. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you all very much, meeting is adjourned. Yeah, have a-